So we're right on time for our 9:30 presentation on the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium by Lake County Watershed Protection District staff. All right. All right, Dr. Apadie, the floor is yours.
So Angela would be taking this presentation giving us.
Oh, Angelo, okay.
Can you hear me this morning, Board?
Yes, we can.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was trying to video in, but it says the host has stopped it. So hopefully you'll just be able to hear my voice today. And my name is Angela De Palma Dow. I'm Program Coordinator in Lake County Water Resources. And today we're going to provide a brief update on the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium. This event is happening next week, so I wanted to make sure, because it is a public event, and the Watershed Protection District has coordinated this event, that we provide an update to the board and to the public. And I wanted to start off and thank the event sponsors and supporters. I believe there are some hard copy flyers in the board chambers. We also have this flyer on our website with all of our sponsors and financial supporters listed there. Also, the co-coordinator for this event with myself is Dr. Janine Pfeiffer. Our event planner is Abby Lou Presents. Our amazing accountant in Water Resources that was able to add yet another tedious financial project to her docket, thank you, Jaclyn Storrs. We also have a film as part of this event, and our magic movie maker, Sam Houston, is incredible in putting that together. And all the district staff that have helped put this, helped plan this event and will be there to help on the event in real life, in real time. The purpose of this event is its history for research and management in Clear Lake. So it's a two-day symposium. It's going to cover all the latest developments in water quality monitoring, land and lake management, conservation, restoration activities in the Clear Lake watershed. And the last time we had a symposium dedicated to Clear Lake in Lake County was in 1997 and 1998. It was two days, but spread over two different years. And the covers of those symposiums proceedings I've provided here. So it's been a little bit. It's been about 25 years, actually, since we had a dedicated Clear Lake Science Symposium. And there's been a lot of changes to the lake, a lot of research and management that has occurred. And so we really wanted to have a comprehensive, publicly accessible event that would showcase all this work and identify the next steps going forward. And hopefully, we won't be waiting 25 years for the next one. That's my goal. So this event will be majorly in person in Upper Lake at Robinson Ranteria Conference Center. And we will have sessions there during the day, Thursday, Friday. We also have another offsite location for sessions, and that'll be the Bimat Hall's Upper Lake Meeting Hall, because we have so much science and so much research to cover that we had to have sessions at the same time in two different locations. And because tribal partners are so vital to everything that has occurred in the watershed and continues to occur, we wanted to make sure that we were able to incorporate two tribal locations in this event. In the evening, there's going to be poster session networking events, Thursday evening at Robinson Ranteria. And that'll be 5:30 to 8:00. And then on Friday, the 16th, in the evening, we're going to bring it back to Lakeport for the Clear Lake Film and Science Slam. And this is a mini-science documentary, and I have a slide with a little more information on that in a bit. So briefly, some of the process that we put together for this, because it is a huge event, is we really needed to, well, we started with the idea, the concept was derived from a meeting during winter 2023 for Clear Lake Hitch. And this was at UC Davis, in Davis, with a variety of researchers, managers, and anybody that wanted to kind of figure out how we go forward on the Clear Lake Hitch. And one of the things that came out was that there isn't one place where all the current science and research on the lake and the basin is put together. And in order to manage the hitch, which rely on tributaries and the lake, we had to have a spot for that. And so we really felt that the Watershed Protection District was the appropriate entity to put this on, to make sure that there was complete public access and awareness for this event. And also, as the local managing agency, it made sense for us to also host this. We had two planning events for the Science Symposium, one in November, one in April. And we also released a participation survey. So we wanted to make sure that researchers and managers were even interested in participating. And if they had current research and management that they were willing to share. So we did a survey to make sure that we had enough interest in order to put a vet on and to kind of gauge the level of involvement before we endeavored on this huge planning process. And then we did conduct some outreach to the community, especially through social media. We want to make sure that, you know, people wanted to be involved and also to maximize the resources from the community. So we did a call for wildlife photos and videos and let people know that we were doing a symposium and wanted to see what the public could provide as far as images about Clear Lake and Clear Lake watershed. And so that's what some of these images are here of the mountain lion and the bear. And then we also did a call for exhibitors and sponsors and volunteers. So this was after the second planning meeting. And this was because we wanted to make sure that we had this collaboration and accessibility. So exhibitors are going to have booths, they're going to provide info, networking materials. They also contributed a large amount to our swag bags. And these are companies, organizations, and partners that are doing work here in Clear Lake or with Clear Lake organizations and agencies. And so it was really important to be able to have ability for them to mingle with the public and with all the partners at this event. So sponsors, sometimes people maybe couldn't attend in person, but they wanted to support the event. Or sometimes they wanted to provide some other sort of support. So sponsorships include in-kind. They also, sponsors are vital for providing financial resources for our reception, our snack breaks, and then, of course, our swag bag materials. And then we did a call for volunteers. So if anybody wants to be involved in volunteering at the event itself, we also released that call. And that is vital, too, because it's a big event, there's going to be stuff that comes up that we're going to need help with, and our little district staff is going to be there. But it's great to have more engaged and excited volunteers to help. So this is the schedule of the event. It is very small, and I'm not going to go in detail for everything. I really encourage anybody to check out our website. And on our, the Water Resource Department website, this schedule is posted there as an image. You can also download it as a PDF. But you can see where we have our breaks, we have our keynote speakers, and we have the sessions and the sessions topics. And again, it's really small, I'm not going to go through each one. I don't mind answering questions this morning for any specific sessions or what might be covered, but I just wanted to make sure that highlight the schedule was on our website. And these are all the agencies and partners and anyone that's participating in the symposium. So whether they're presenting, they're moderating, they're leading a workshop. And I think this is a really great snapshot of all the partners and collaborations and people and agencies that are bringing information together for this event, that have been conducting research, management, science here in Clear Lake and in the basin. And so I'm just really proud and excited that all of these partners are together for this event. Our event blessing will be by Jaime Boggs. Really appreciative for him for being able to participate. He is a member-at-large in Robinson Ranteria Council. Thank you, Jaime. And our keynote speaker will be Geneva Thompson. She is from California Natural Resource Agency and the Deputy Secretary for Tribal Affairs. And Geneva has been out here to Clear Lake, she's been involved in the Clear Lake Blue Ribbon Committee for Clear Lake Restoration. She's been to site visit, she's been out on her boat, she always attends the meetings. She's really been invested in work here in Clear Lake and really excited to have her as our keynote speaker. So a little details on the evening activities on Thursday at 6:00 PM at Robinson. We'll have a science networking reception, so this will be a poster presentation where the public and partners can mingle with scientists, managers, ask those detailed questions, have conversations over mocktails and snacks. And again, there'll be posters there that will be presenting some of the information that isn't covered in the talks during the symposium. And then on Friday evening, here in Lakeport, it's Sopa Reis. The door is open at 6:00 and the show starts at 7:00. We're going to have the Big Lake, Big Science, mini-science documentary, and we're really excited for this. There hasn't been a movie that's focused on Clear Lake and science ever, so this is really fabulous. And thank you so much, our videographer and editor extraordinaire, Sam Houston, is just, this would not have been possible without him, and we're really grateful that he's here in county and can help put this on. And then thank you for the admin, County of Lake, your support for also being a producer of this, so thank you. We did a lot of media marketing. We actually had a goal of 120 posts, 120 days. We really wanted to saturate the social media market for this event and get as many people excited about it as possible. And so we're able to do that, we're on goal. And if anybody wants to follow us on social media, if you haven't already, our handles are here, Facebook at Clear Lake CA Science, Instagram, Clear Lake CA Science, and then also our X or formerly Twitter handle. And we did market a lot of hashtags, again, to kind of spread the awareness of this event. And it's just really important that we have a presence on social media to get this event going. Here's an example of some of those posts that we've put out. So earlier, it was just to kind of let people know about the Science Symposium, when it was going to be, the dates. And then, as we got closer to the event, over the last month, we've been doing specific sessions, callouts in our posts. So if we have, you know, the landscape restoration projects, those will be talked about on Friday. We have an environmental permitting, 101 session. There's, of course, a Clear Lake Hitch Status and Conservation. This is a double session that'll be on Friday from 2:30 to 5:30. And then, of course, our Clear Lake Monitoring and Modeling Session. So we wanted to make sure we were calling out each of those particular sessions with their specific days and times throughout our media campaign. And if anybody wants information, again, please go to the website on our County of Lake website underwater resources. We have a specific tab for the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium. And everything that you need is there. There's a lot of links that go off for, you know, volunteer registration, or there's a registration on Eventbrite. We want to make sure that we're anticipating how many people will be there. But you can get all of those links and the schedule, the list of sponsors, all of that's available at this website. So my last two slides just go over the budgets and funding sources, because this is a public held event. I want to be totally transparent with how it's being funded. So these are all of the major funding, financial sponsors and supporters for this. And we do have support from the Watershed Protection District. And we have budgeted between $10,000 and $20,000, spread over two fiscal years for this. It's really hard to gauge exactly how much this event would cost, since we've never done it before, and we didn't know exactly what it would entail. And I believe I came to the board before, I think in April, to talk about this, April, March or April, and you guys asked me how much it would cost, and I said, I don't know. Well, we have a little better idea now, but we wanted to make sure we budgeted enough for the district. And if you look at the bottom of the slide, I have listed the State Lands Commission Code and the Legislative Directive of the Watershed Protection District, Senate Bill 1136, that I think provide the rationale for why the Watershed Protection District should be doing this event and why we can dedicate funds from the district for making it happen. I will also acknowledge that we got various small donations and contributions from companies and some individuals that totaled about $2,000 for this. So really excited and thankful for them to provide that support. So here is our budget so far. We had a spending goal of about $50,000 is what we were expecting we would spend. We, right now, currently, with all our estimates, about $45,000, so that's great. That leaves about a $5,000 buffer for unanticipated costs that might show up right before the event or during the event. And you guys can see some of the breakdown there for planning, food and drink and swag, which were, of course, some of the larger cost items. And I will note that some of the specific donations we got, or the granted funds, so we have a repurposed water quality data grant that was put towards this event. And then we had a grant from the Westside Sacramento Integrated Regional Water Management Committee, and those grants came with specific purposes. So they were for food and drink receptions and breaks, or for swag items, like some of the donations were specifically for swag items. So that's how some of the funding for those items came about and some of the requirements. And then here's the grant sources, which is just the graphic showing what I showed earlier. But what I wanted to really point out was that of the funding sources that we were able to get for this, out of our, what we spent so far, 83% of this event was spent outside of district funds, and I think that's great. So that's pretty much on par with when we do any grant project. You know, the grant pays for about 50 to 75% of what we do, and then we fund the rest with district funds. So this is right along those lines, like any other project we do. And so we have a little bit of local investment, and we can really maximize it with some of those outside funding sources. So thank you so much for your time today. And again, I just want to thank all of our sponsors that made this event possible, and we're really excited to have them there in person and see them next week. The website is on the top of the screen there, our hashtag, and then our social media handle there at Clear Lake CA Science. Please follow us. And thank you so much, Lake County and the board for supporting this. Thank you especially District 4, Michael Green, for putting in a big chunk of money early on, we really appreciate that. So with that, I can take any questions, and thank you so much for the time today.
Any questions?
Angela, we're all so excited about this. We've been looking forward to this for a long, long time. So I really appreciate all the work that the departments put into this. And what a great event for our new director to attend and meet so many of our stakeholders. I have a couple of questions. How is attendance coming on Eventbrite?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Pyska. Yeah, so Eventbrite, the way you can sign up is for each day, for day activities, and then you can sign up for the evening activities also separately. And then we also have digital binder options, so actual physical printouts for sale. And we have, so far, the last time I checked, about 124 to 130 for events out of the 200 limit capacity at Robinson Ranteria. So we're really excited, that's right on par, we're expecting a push towards, closer towards the event. And yeah, so that, yeah, we're excited about those numbers. If I get 200 people in chairs during this event, I will be a happy camper, I'm really excited.
Yeah, oh, that's great, looks like we're on track. And then the next question is about the resources that'll be available. We all the time get questions from our constituents about, you know, what's going on at the lake. It's always a really broad question. And how will we be able to point them to some of the resources and research that comes out of the symposium?
Yeah, that's also a really great question. So part of this symposium was to not just have everything in one place and presented at one moment in time, and not just to capture it in like a dusty binder that would sit on the shelf and nobody see it, but we're creating what's called a digital binder. So that is copies of all the presentations, the abstracts, the biographies of the speakers, their websites, where you can get their data, where you can learn about their projects. All of that will be together on this website, so we'll keep the integrated Science Symposium website. We also will be, as much as connectivity allows, we're going to be having remote access for the symposium via Zoom webinars, and I believe there'll be some live streaming. The area does have some connectivity issues, so we're not guaranteeing it 100% of the time. But we definitely are going to be recording all of the sessions, and then those will be also provided in little snippets for somebody to be able to preview now and going into the future. And again, thanks to Sam Houston for committing to be able to do that. So he's in charge of the tech for this and making sure that we get those recordings, and they'll be available on the Water Resource Department YouTube. And then we can highlight them as we go on in the future for specific issues that arise, like in lake management or hitch conservation. So hopefully those will be able to help you when you're responding to constituents that have specific concerns about the lake or the watershed. And if there's something specific that you guys need that people ask for, let me know so we can build it in, because I want to make sure that we're producing the right materials that can communicate the science and the research to the public. So I totally acknowledge we might forget something. And so if there's anything specific that you would like, let us know.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you, Angela, for the great presentation. It's great to hear the excitement in your voice, this is a very exciting event. Dr. Apadaway, I'm very excited that you're here. I know a big draw for you in coming here was just the amount of natural resources here and the many challenges that come with it. I'm excited for you, and I do want to point out that in the midst of all this planning, Water Resources, our staff have gone through a change, reorganization, a new department head, ongoing staff challenges. So the work is certainly there. And in the midst of all this change, Angela, to see this project come forward and come together, super excited. I did go on Eventbrite, and I volunteered, so I want you to put me to work on that Thursday and Friday. I don't care if I'm running swag bags, I want to help if I can. And if you still have a call for volunteers and you need some additional help, I hope people listening to this will throw down. But even if you aren't volunteering, even if you aren't a scientist, I think you're going to find a lot of good information here. So let's pack the seats, let's have a really good event. I don't know what I don't know about this lake, but I'm going back to the fact that it's been 25 years since the last big event here. And I've had a deep dive, for various reasons, into about 50 years of watershed district history. So we were talking about algae 50 years ago, we're talking about algae today, and many other things like Clear Lake Hitch. So to see this come together in such a beautiful way, it just makes me very proud of our Water Resources Department and staff, and I think I'm going to be very excited to see what the scientists bring to this.
Supervisor Simon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Apadaway and Angela, for bringing this. The one question I have is, because we're talking about the most maximum, you know, viewing of this stuff. So since, I think she said Sam created the movie that's going to be done, Sam, was that right, Angela, or no?
Yes, that is right. So we have a, outside of the scientific symposium, we wanted to create something that was a little more like on the entertainment, but accessible side, that kind of did a snapshot of, you know, what's going on in Clear Lake and some of the issues. And what we really wanted to do was to produce something that said, Clear Lake is unique. Clear Lake is not like any other lake, and we want people to come here and study it, and we want to do the management that's needed. And this is a really great place to do that work and also express our love for Clear Lake. So it's kind of like a love letter to Clear Lake, this movie is, I've kind of been saying that all along. And also, kind of a call for scientists and researchers to come to our lake, it's a unique system, it's novel, you're not going to see it anywhere else. And there's a community here that really depends on their lake and are invested in, you know, the science and the research that's needed and the action to make Clear Lake the best lake that she can be. So that is kind of what the film is about. And we're, you know, excited to have a lot of the interviewees and participants in this film. You know, we couldn't fit it all in like a 40, 45-minute film, but we have all of those interviews and ideas and perspectives that we'll have that we can use for then future products. And again, just really indebted to admin for being able to produce this with us, and Sam for being able to film it and organize logistics. And I hope that answered your question.
Yep, answered my question perfectly.
Supervisor Simon.
And my thoughts were, you know, if we could work with PEG TV to get this, we're always looking for an educational opportunity, maybe those discussions have already happened, but getting it on there to really run this, you know, all the time, and as we continue to do that. So that's great to hear that the discussions are already, are going to happen. So, yeah, I think this is a great program and opportunity to get out there.
There is, there's a collaborative. Excuse me, there's a collaborative between PEG and the county. PEG will be there on the 16th.
I think the sessions and the talks would be recorded and made available for later viewing.
All right. Open it up for the public, is there anyone from the public that'd like to come up and speak about the item on the agenda?
Good morning. Let me get to the mic. All right. Still creaks, but anyway, I'm Tom Slate, and I really wasn't prepared for this. I just found out about all this recently. I'm not involved in social media, I'm on the computer all the time online, but I didn't know, so I'll just put together what I have. And this is my perspective, something that I, issues that I think may not come out of these, and I think this is all good intentions, I'm sincere about that. But I think there may be some information that won't be included. And again, this is my stream of consciousness presentation here, but it seems to me, after 22 years, for me, it is quite obvious that there are major aerosol spray operations taking place over Lake County. I could be wrong, of course, I don't think so. And back then, when we, some of us were questioning this, we were told nothing is going on. Well, a major body of people who have the credentials to do the research have come out with major amounts of information to be considered. And that I think is not going to be brought up by this at all. And so I brought a few things to hand out, which I expect, because you people, it seems to me, are kind of in a spot, right? If this, if there's reality to this, where does this put you? Well, I think you people have, especially Moke, I know you a little bit, I think you have a conscience, I'm sure you do, and probably the rest of you, too, when you look at this, and there's some legitimate information here to be considered. And I made 20 presentations to the board of supervisors between 2006 and 2012, right here in this room. And I have all that on a 93-minute DVD, and you can see what went on there. So this is nothing new, and I don't have the particular date, but I made a DVD, a 20-minute DVD of video clips from 2002 and 2003, taken in Lake County. And only 20 minutes, you can take a look at it, what was going on in our Skype back then, draw your own conclusions. A colleague of mine, Dayton Wiggington, has a website, I'm not done yet, but thank you. This booklet, he sent me a box of these quite a while back. He has a website, geoengineeringwatch.com, that you can check out. Check out this book, Draw Your Own Conclusions. But there is major amounts of information that I think needs to be considered, that is probably not going to be involved in any of this. Again, I don't doubt the good intentions, because we're always told, you know, don't look over there, don't look at this, just look over here. And I'll see if I have anything else, but, oh, and my goal is to show, from my perspective, that it is, that whatever is going on. Other people with science backgrounds, what they are finding, to as far as we can tell, what it is. That's not my role, and it's never been my role. And just, oh, as far as, oh, I think I said that the survey, I didn't know anything about this until about a week ago. And so what I will give you is copies of this book, each one has a copy of that 20-minute DVD in it. I'm disclosing this information to you, my video is called White Haze and Jet Trails.
Right, we're going to have to wrap up your comments, Mr. Slate.
Pardon me?
You have your three minutes, you have to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. They showed my video on the PEG channel about 20 or 30 times, 2010, but.
We'll take the video and we'll go from there and.
I expect you to ignore it, and I'm not being disrespectful, that's kind of how it works.
If you could show up to this and explain and contribute to it, that'd be great. And we'll get the video, is there six of them, or do you just have one?
Oh, no, I have plenty.
So I'll have.
Yeah, I have one for each of you and one for this gentleman.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this, either in chambers or on Zoom?
Betsy Con.
All right.
Well, here's eight, take that.
All right.
Thank you, and I am sincere when I say thank you, you know that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll just leave it here.
All right, Betsy, go ahead.
Good morning, Board. Betsy Con for the Essential Public Information Center. I have been involved in the U.S. EPA Nonpoint National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permitting programs for the state of California and the County of Lake for 24 years. I have been a member of the public, involved in the Clean Water Program for its entire existence, and I have been very, very delighted to have Angela De Palma Dow as a special guest on my radio program on KPFZ every month for the last two or three years. She provides us with an update on all the water programs, all of the grant projects, the Blue Ribbon Committee and so forth. This is a tremendous achievement for the County of Lake, and I just wanted to let you know that this is received very well by the public. We cannot thank you all enough for sponsoring. We cannot thank you all enough for sponsoring this. It's a real feather in your cap to have this done, and we so appreciate the work done by the Water Resources Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy. Is there any other hands? Donna Makowitz, go ahead, you have your three minutes.
Good morning, Board. Donna Makowitz, Red Bud Otamont. I am super excited to be involved in this Science Symposium. Angela and Janine, the whole group have done an amazing job, and I'd like everyone to know, it's not just for the scientists. The average person is just going to be amazed at all the information that's going to be presented, and there are so many fantastic programs, it's going to be hard to decide which lesson you'd like to go to. So I hope everyone will come on out, and it's just going to be totally the best thing of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. We'll see you there. Anyone else on Zoom?
So I would like to appreciate like the support which we have received from the Board of Supervisors and also the Water Resources staff. It seems it's a long term in making, but it does took like a substantial effort from the staff, so I would like to thank everyone.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Any other, I didn't even close public input, so no hands came up or anything? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board, and Supervisor Green, go ahead.
Just very briefly, just because it was brought up, one reason I'm excited about this Science Symposium is it's science. This is not the first reference I've heard today about geoengineering. I heard a clerk get grilled about geoengineering at a recent city council meeting here in Lakeport. It's upsetting to me when people who apply their lives and their education to pure science and applied science here within our watershed, and when people come up with their own versions of science and other things that they think should be reviewed during our development of policies to benefit Clear Lake. So everyone is free to have an opinion, but one reason I value this scientific conference is we're going to get the experts in the room, and we're going to do some real science. And that's another reason I'm very excited about this. We need to be able to counter scientific misinformation in this day and age just as effectively as we need to advocate for true science. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other closing remarks, I will close out with saying that I hope to see everybody at this, or as many people as possible, at this fully-packed event both days. It goes into the evening both days, and I just, I get a lot of folks that have questions about the lake that I try to answer. Of course, I'm not a professional, and I have to depend on the professionals in our Water Resources Department and other folks that come along and give that input. So this is a place where they can get that. So I've been sending this to some folks here and there who've been trying to go. I'm glad it's pushed out there, so we can get some more knowledge and then know how better to understand our lake and whatnot, I guess we could say there. So with that, I guess there's no other comments. We'll close this item out.